Board members are with us today, and that would be Vice Chair Phil North from the Hollins District, Jason Peters from the Vinton District. If any more of the two might pop in, I'll let you know. But let me try to set the table for today's town hall meeting. One positive to come out of these unprecedented times has been finding new and creative ways to reach citizens. These online platforms have certainly provided a valuable opportunity for us to connect with citizens and business leaders to share updates. No one would disagree that 2020 has been a year of challenges and turbulence for not only our community, but all across the country. But I'm pleased to say that Roanoke County remains strong and we continue to serve. You'll hear that much of our work has been impacted by COVID-19, but we've taken actions to manage and mitigate those impacts to our day-to-day services and our budget. Funding awarded to the county through various sources has allowed us to assist our business community with a small business grant recovery program, as well as short-term financial assistance for citizens. And we're also supporting our schools as they face the challenges of reopening. Also, despite the uncertain times, our parks and recreation programs and our transportation projects have continued to move ahead, making adjustments along the way, as we will hear today. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and staff, I appreciate your commitment and contributions to our local economy. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our county administrator, Dan O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. What I would like to do is talk a little bit about the continuity of services that we've established. First of all, let's kind of turn the clock back if we could. We're sailing along the beginning of March. We had just proposed a budget with about a 3% increase, some significant salary increase proposals for staff and a variety of capital projects. And about two weeks later, we were hit with COVID-19, which really put us in a position of having to redo the budget. We had to cut the budget from the previous year by about 3%. There were no more salary increases. We had to have some layoffs of part-time employees. We had hiring restrictions and a variety of economic... We had to slam on the economic brakes just to get through the last few months. But what we did, as soon as we knew there was a state of emergency, we enacted our emergency operation planning process. And the first thing we did, other than providing avenues for health and safety, was to make sure we had a continuity of services plan. And as David just talked about, we really challenged our staff to have some creative solutions to continue to provide services, even when our buildings had to be closed. Some examples of that is we erected a tent in front of the administration center for permit review and inspection questions and plan reviews, permit applications. So we always had the services to the development community ongoing. We continue to do all kinds of planning for the projects you're going to hear Philip Thompson talk about for construction projects or capital projects for transportation. And we had a lot of creative solutions come from staff. We did have a lot of employees working from home. And as David said, we've learned how to communicate. We do a lot of these Zoom meetings. But also, we found ways to have our employees productive from home. So we always had communications open for just about every service in the county. And I think the important thing to keep the economy going for the county to do is simply to provide the vital services that everybody needs. And I know this is slightly outside of the area of economic development, but I really want to take my hat off to all of our emergency service, police, fire and rescue, trash collection. All of those vital services were kept going, and that is crucial. And so I think just by providing those services continuing, we were able to provide the ability for businesses to continue. And that was really our goal. We did have to curtail library services, but we did expand some online services. And currently, we can have drive-through and curbside delivery for library services. And another creative way to use our facilities was to... We used the library windows for drive-up service for tax collection and any kind of transactional things that people had to do through the treasurer's office. And we actually used a drive-through window at social services for client needs as well. So even though our buildings had to be closed for a while, we did provide, I think, a high level of service. And just as I said, my hat is off to all the staff that worked on these processes that we put in place to keep everybody safe and still allow the economy to move forward and the services to be delivered. And another thing the board did was approved an additional two months kind of a holiday to pay personal property taxes without penalties. And so that tried to be helpful to the tax-paying public as well. And then, once we got to the point where we could begin to reopen, and you're going to hear a little bit about this later, is we expedited the reopening of Explorer Park and Green Ridge. Obviously, we can't do the Splash Valley. There's a restriction on that. But to the extent allowed by the governor's orders and the health restrictions, we've been able to open just about all of our services. And I'm really proud of the staff for working through that process. And in terms of economic development, you'll hear a lot of information that went out on how to apply for various loans and grants and programs available through all levels of government that Jill and the economic development staff worked on. So that was, has been very helpful during this whole process. In terms of our current state of operations, most of our services are now available in person, although we still request that the public call first. And you can go to our webpage and see, get information on how to access all the services. The buildings are basically open with the exception of libraries. However, in accordance with the health regulations, people will be requested to wear face coverings, and we are practicing social distancing. And I would estimate about 20% of our staff are still telecommunicating. And we're working on a long-term employee telecommuting policy. And I think that's one of the silver linings of this. We found out that there is a way to provide a lot of services, not necessarily from the offices, but from people's homes. So that's going to provide some flexibility for employees and some alternative communication methods for the public as well in the future. One of the big things we're working on, of course, is the programming of the CARES Act funds. We did receive $8.2 million through the state, from the federal government, for COVID-related needs. There's a lot of strings attached to that, so it's been very cumbersome to work through. And all of the funds have to be spent by December 30th. So we put a lot of dollars into our facilities and making sure we have social distancing as required and all of the safety measures for our facilities. We're installing plexiglass barriers and we're actually purchasing a building for our health clinic. But as Jill mentioned and David mentioned, we also set aside $1 million plus Vintonis is putting in some dollars as well for a small business relief program, a grant program, that is being administered through the Economic Development Authority and the Economic Development Department. We've also set aside $450,000 through social services for relief payments, for rent, mortgage, utilities, and any other financial hardships that are due to COVID that our citizens may have. So we are trying to provide some direct relief to citizens through these mechanisms. And we're also working with schools to help them open. We're working with them on developing some daycare options, especially for the school staff. The teachers have to have daycare as they have to go back into the classroom. And we're working on a variety of other options and needs that the schools have. So that's an ongoing process. And also, parks and rec and library services are still in partial capacity. We are definitely working towards providing full services as pandemic restrictions allow in the near future. So I think our current state is we're doing about as well as we can be expected to do, given the conditions that we have to work under. And I just, once again, I'd like to thank all of the staff of the county because we really did pull together to keep things going. And I'm very proud of the people that work here. And then, the final thing I wanted to talk about is our rural broadband initiative. One of the things that we discovered in this pandemic, and we knew going into it, is that we did not have sufficient broadband to the home in a lot of cases. And we looked at using some of the funds available through the CARES Act, but the timeframes make it very problematic to use those funds for long-term broadband solutions. However, even before the pandemic began, our Communications and Information Technology Department completed a survey that showed about 80% of our population has some internet connectivity, but almost 2/3 of the county residents do not really have a high-speed broadband connection. And the survey identified the areas within geographic areas in the county that lack the services. So through this survey, we developed a request for proposals that identified these areas, and that just went out. And the vendor proposals will due June 16th, and we will be reviewing them in the very near future. And the goal of these proposals is to find projects that we can apply for a Virginia telecommunications initiative grant or a VATI grant, which is a state grant that provides internet solutions for local communities. And we have budgeted sufficient set aside. There's a 20% match for that. So we are hopeful that we can put together a successful application to get that 20% to 25% of our citizens or more that really don't have the services that they need. We have a lot of small businesses that operate out of the home, and we really need to, for economic development, increase the ability for people to work out of their home through those internet connections. The VATI grant application is due August 17th, and we're hopeful that we will be successful and get a grant awarded to us. But even if we don't, we're going to continue to try to find creative solutions to get some broadband to the last mile, to the home, so are all of our citizens for business purposes, as well as education, because a lot of kids don't have the broadband capability in their home. And there's going to be a lot more distance learning in the future. So we're very hopeful that we'll be able to announce, hopefully in the fall, that we'll be able to move forward with some projects. So that's kind of my summary of where we are with operations and broadband. And I'd be happy to answer any questions later in the program if any are asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell and Chairman Radford. I will now kind of talk about economic development and give you some general updates of where we are and where we've been. Obviously, COVID-19 has had an enormous negative impact on county businesses, their employees, owners and customers. Throughout the pandemic, staff has stayed in close contact with county businesses through regular phone calls, emails, social media posts and our website, so that we can monitor COVID's impact on business productivity, revenues and employment, and to connect businesses with an array of resources for which many express great appreciation. We immediately formed a regional task force of economic development professionals to respond to the pandemic. As part of our outreach effort, we surveyed all businesses in the region and asked the county's approximately 4,300 business license holders to take part in an online survey to gauge COVID-19's impact on business. We then followed up with those businesses by providing information requested and pointing them to appropriate resources. Examples of assistance provided included regular updates on the governor's proclamation and reopening guidelines, as well as information on best practices for reopening and survival tips for businesses. We provided connections to state officials and guidance to businesses seeking to obtain the designation as an essential business. And this was really important and of great concern to many of our businesses during the governor's early mandate of closure declarations. We've also helped businesses with resources for personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies, guidance with the Virginia Department of Health when responding to COVID cases. Obviously, we connected as many businesses as possible to the Small Business Administration's EIDL and Paycheck Protection Programs, but we also promoted numerous grants provided through the Virginia 30 Day Fund, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, Virginia Child Care Provider Program, existing worker training program and Mid-Atlantic Trade Adjustment Assistance Center, just to name a few. There were many resources out there, and we were promoting them as we could. It's important to note at this point that if a business qualifies for PPP or an EIDL loan, these funds are still available, but time is running out as the program ends on August 8. You can contact Amanda Forster at the Small Business Development Center for more on this if you're interested. Specific information and guidance was also provided through our partners. For example, the Virginia Career Works Blue Ridge provided $16,000 in layoff of version grants to four county businesses and other grants that we secured for companies during this challenging time. Some of them were actually growing and expanding. An example of this includes a $23,000 grant from the Virginia Jobs Investment Program to a manufacturer of PPE for hiring 31 additional employees within the town of Vinton. There's also a pending $750,000 grant request for the company to purchase additional equipment. We also helped facilitate $126,000 in grants for seven businesses through the EDP International Trade Office for county companies that are exporting. And we're pleased to participate in the Roanoke Regional Partnership's $100,000 Regional Recovery Grant to assist targeted sector companies with guidance during the recovery phase of COVID-19. And of course, we recently released the Roanoke County and Town Event and Small Business Recovery Grant Program, which, well, I will talk about a little more in a few minutes. We also created three new platforms on our website and on social media, including a business-to-business platform that features businesses providing direct resources to other businesses in the county. We also created an open-for-business platform, promoting restaurants and retail establishments who remained open or provided curbside service, and a We're Hiring platform showcasing companies that are currently hiring. Overall, nearly 170 businesses participated directly in these marketing platforms. In light of the COVID-19 situation and concerns about living and working in dense urban areas, the Roanoke Regional Partnership launched a campaign to recruit to the region people who can telework to jobs elsewhere. The campaign, "The View From Your Office", has the tagline, "Live here, work anywhere, play everywhere", and is targeting major cities in the East and West Coast and touts the benefits of our outdoor lifestyle, affordable housing, convenience and recreational amenities available in the Roanoke Valley. In its first 30 days, the campaign has resulted in over 2 million impressions and demonstrates the continued interest in our region for living and working. Surprisingly, prospect activity is continuing with developers and investors calling weekly. We are responding and managing all prospect activities as usual. Working with the Roanoke Regional Partnership, we also held an online meeting about the region's opportunity zones. This meeting with businesses, property owners, realtors, developers and other community stakeholders was very beneficial in promoting the tax breaks and benefits and features of the Opportunity Zone Program. Our zone is located at the intersection of 81 and 581, and it contains about 33 parcels totaling nearly 200 acres of undeveloped or underdeveloped land targeted and zoned for industrial, commercial or multifamily development. This area also includes the 109-acre Woodhaven Technology Park, and we recently received a $15,000 grant from the state to procure a marketing prospectus for the zone. A summary of the situation in Roanoke County for our businesses looks something like this. Our traded-sector businesses, those that are selling outside of the region, have been hurt, but for the most part, they're still operational and weathering the storm. A few manufacturers have trimmed shifts and/or have temporary shutdowns due to slow demand, but overall, manufacturers are holding up and faring well. Non-traded-sector businesses, however, restaurants, retail, personal services, et cetera, that sell locally have been hit far worse with a decrease in sales of 50% to 100%, layoffs, temporary or permanent closures. These businesses are typically small, customer-facing, and have little to no reserves or lines of credit upon which to draw. Nearly 38% year-over-year declines in new business licenses are currently our state and Roanoke County. So we are down on business license issuance, but hopefully that'll pick back up. From the state's perspective, a recent presentation by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership cites that 90% of economists are projecting the economy to be fully underway this quarter, but overall, the prediction is that the state is expecting to be one-half of the way back with economic performance by January if we stay on track. Of course, much of this depends on the development of a vaccine that is expected near the end of the year. As you all know, the unemployment picture is quite painful. While initial claims have fallen from their peak in late March and early April, they have now leveled off, but they are still high. In Roanoke County, represented by the topmost blue line, 179 people filed an initial claim in the most recent week for which we have data. Likewise, continuing claims in the county, the dark blue section in the middle of the graph, have been inching downward, but just over 3,000 people were still filing as of July 11. Not surprisingly, the hardest-hit industries in terms of job loss are accommodations and food services, retail and healthcare. Keep in mind also that the additional $600 per week in federal unemployment insurance benefits effectively ends this month. Roanoke County's most recent published unemployment rate for May was at 8.2%, down from 9.6 in April. The state's June unemployment rate is 11.2%, down from 13% in May. So we can see that the unemployment rates are slowly coming back down as people are beginning to return to work. A big concern, however, is retraining for unemployed workers over the long term, particularly in the hospitality sector. We will be working more with our state partners to deploy retraining resources over the next two years or longer as needed. Many people will need new jobs and help to reposition and gain new skills, particularly if they shift to a manufacturing environment. The county's housing market is holding up, and it remains strong with the Regional Multiple Listing Service recording the highest level of pending sales in their history. Also, prices are holding steady for the most part, so there is forward momentum here. And we are seeing fairly stable vehicle sales as well during this time. Finally, I wanted to share some specific development project updates, which is always what people are most interested in hearing. Updates on Tanglewood Mall include the construction of a new Kroger Fuel Island between the Firestone and the Kroger, with completion expected for early December. Curly and Children's Construction is underway, with their opening expected next year. We have two new hotel projects being planned in the county, a Spring Hill Suites at Gander Way and a new proposed hotel at Wildwood Road in I-81 that's subject to a favorable rezoning. The Appalachian Electric Power Transmission Operations Center project at the Center for Research and Technology is anticipating construction to begin this fall. And Mack Trucks is planning to start production of the new medium-duty truck model beginning on September 1st. This start was slightly delayed from July as a result of the pandemic. We have a new Firestone Automotive Center under construction in the Bonzac area, and the Lewis Scale Freestanding Emergency Room Construction is also expected to begin this fall in Bonzac. We are continuing to build and market the Woodhaven Technology Park with our regional partners. And Ballyhak Golf Course, featured in Golf Digest Magazine, is continuing to grow with Phase 3 of their expansion adding eight new residential cottages. Lastly, the Roanoke County and Town Event and Small Business Recovery Grant Program was launched on July 6th. We are receiving applications through July 31st. Funding for the $1.1 million program came from the Federal CARES Act, and these first-come, first-served grants are available to assist businesses with the negative impacts of COVID and will help them sustain their operations in the county. To date, we have received approximately 139 requests totaling almost $660,000. We encourage small businesses to submit their applications soon so that we can provide them with financial support. I want to say thank you to our partners for a strong team effort during a difficult time. Thank you to the Roanoke Regional Partnership, the Small Business Development Center, the Chamber of Commerce and our Regional Workforce Board. I will now turn the program over to Philip Thompson, Director of Planning, to provide recent updates on transportation and planning projects. Philip?
All right. I'm going to kind of give an update on several transportation projects throughout the county and also some of our planning studies that are nearing completion. So if you go to the next slide, Jill. All right, so the first area that we're going to focus on, it's 419 and 220. There are several projects. Again, these are funded projects and other ones that we're seeking funding for. So I'll start at the top and work my way down on this slide. See the kind of the blue circle? That is our 419-220 Diverging Diamond Interchange Project, $17.5 million. This project will convert existing interchange to a diverging diamond interchange. It would include ramp modifications and traffic signal phase changes to help move traffic through the interchange. Sidewalks and bicycle accommodations will be constructed through the interchange. Backland county sidewalks and bike lanes in front of Tanglewood Mall to existing City of Roanoke sidewalks and bicycle lanes. Currently, preliminary engineering is going on, is underway, and construction is proposed for 2024. If you look at the yellow line on the map, that is our Route 419 Widening Safety Improvement Project. That's $6.5 million project. It will start construction next month. It involves the construction of a third lane on the south side of 419 from Ogden Road to the Route 220 interchange. It also would put sidewalks on both sides of 419. It would also have pedestrian signal and crosswalk upgrades at Ogden Road, Elmview Road and South Peak Boulevard traffic signals. There are also bike lanes proposed in both directions and a public bus shelter in front of copper broth departments will place the existing bus stops that are there now. The structure will start next month and is anticipated to be completed in 2021. The next road, if you go down to the red road that you see, was this Fallow Water Lane Extension. That's a $4.3 billion project. In essence, it is taking a private access road from the coast to Chuck E. Cheese and making it a public road. The road will extend beyond Chuck E. Cheese Road to connect Chevy Road, which will provide access to Elmview. It will also provide access to property that is zoned for apartments and provide better access. VDOT is currently obtaining the right-of-way for this project and constructed and dislocated in 2021. The last project, which is shown in purple on the map, is a project that we're seeking funding for. It is the second phase of improvement project 419. It would add a third lane in both directions on 419. It would have sidewalks and bicycle lanes from Ogden Road to Starkey Road, and then there would be pedestrian crosswalk signals would be added to the Stark Road intersection. We have received about $4.3 billion through the regional commission or the Transportation Planning Organization. We're going to use that money to seek additional funding. So we have 4.3. We're seeking another $8 million for this $12.3 million project. If you go to the next slide, Jill. Looking at Route 220, this is an improvement project looking at five intersections along 220. That's that Valley Avenue and Southern Hills Drive, Crossco Circle and Pleasant Ridge Road, Old Rock Movement Road, Buck Mountain Road and Sable Road, and then Indian Grave Road and Clearbrook Village Lane. So they're looking to make improvements that would reduce signal phases at these intersections, therefore granting more green time on the traffic on Route 220. And so that project should start in 2021 is approximately, the cost they have is $10.2 million, but that includes all the improvements on 220, including improvements in Franklin County and Henry County. So we don't know the exact cost, but it's within that $10.2 million. Bye, please. So this is just a summary of all those projects. So this is just a summary of all those projects in the four nineteen and two twenty area, roughly over, a little over forty million dollars worth of projects in this area of the county. Next slide, please. All right, so if we look at the northern part of the county, there are several projects going on there as well. The first one, I'll start with, is the yellow one, the biggest project, is the I eighty-one widening project between one forty-one and one forty-three. That would add additional lanes both on the northbound and southbound direction. Construction is currently underway and is expected to be completed in twenty twenty-two. That project is a sixty-two million dollar project that's fully funded. I'll kind of go to the left side of the screen. If you look at the Route three eleven, four nineteen intersection safety improvements, that project involves converting the existing traffic signal there to a roundabout. Construction is anticipated in twenty twenty-one. Two million dollar project that's funded. If you head back to the right-hand side of the screen and you look at the little red improvement of Valley Point Parkway realignment, we are, that's a six and a half million dollar project. We currently have two point five billion from the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization to seek additional money. We'll seek additional four million dollars on that project. This project involves realigning and widening Valley Point Parkway from Concourse Drive to Woodhaven Road and constructing sidewalks along the road to connect to Green Ridge Correction. Last project here is the I five eighty-one exit two at the Peter Creek Road improvements. That is a, it'll be a thirty million dollar project. There's no funding on it right now, but we are seeking funding for that project. That project involves a reconfiguring of the on and off ramps of that intersection, adding to new traffic signals and crosswalks and pedestrian signals, adding an additional left turn lane on Peter Creek Road at Valley Point Parkway, and making adjustments to third lane road and frontage road intersections, and also adding sidewalk as part of that project. Next slide, please. Lastly, the last project here is the widening of eighty-one from mile marker one thirty-six to exit one forty-one. That is a two hundred and ninety-two billion dollar project. I'll tell you what, Interstate eighty-one by adding a third lane in both directions from those two mile marker one thirty-six to exit one forty-one. Construction is anticipated in twenty twenty-two. Next slide. So this also provides a summary of those projects. What's been funded, what we're seeking, what's been granted through the regional commission. Next slide. So the three projects that are shown here on Route four sixty are projects that we are seeking funding for. They come out of a Route four sixty operational assessment that was conducted by VDOT. So there are three projects. I'll start with the one at the upper top of the slide is the Route four sixty, two twenty intersection improvements. This project would reconstruct the intersection to improve traffic flow and safety at this intersection. What they are proposing is something called a displaced left turn. It is a twelve and a half million dollar project. The Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization approved two and a half million dollars in match funding, and we'll be seeking the other ten million dollars for this project this August. The middle project, which is a green line between Parks and Road and Hunt Ridge Road, that is looking at making intersection improvements along this section of roadway. Again, this is about a one point, two billion dollar project. Again, Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization has provided four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in matching funds. We'll be taking another one point seven million dollars for this project. This project would make improvements to several intersections and improve the traffic flow and safety along Route four sixty. And the last project is the Route four sixty West Virgin Road intersection improvement. Again, this is a project that we received money from, from the Regional Transportation Planning Organization. Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand in match funds. We'll be seeking additional three point two million dollars. And this project would make improvements onto the Route four sixty West Virgin Road intersection. I would restrict certain movements on the cross streets, but it would improve traffic flow and safety on Route four sixty. As part of this project, they're going to look at pedestrian combinations if they're warranted or not. Final decision on that has not been made. So if you go to the next slide, again, it'll provide that summary. The three projects we're seeking funding for, again, all these came out of a VDOT transportation study that was recently man completed on four sixty. Next area should be Plantation Road and Williamson Road. There are several projects, all of these projects are funded. The first project, if you look at the map, is the one that's kind of in red. It's at the intersection of Plantation Road and Lila Drive. They are doing intersection improvements. It's a one point eight million dollar project, fully funded. This project installs a traffic signal with pedestrian signals and crosswalks and the reworking of business entrances at Lila Drive and Plantation Road. Construction is currently underway, to be completed this year. The second project is the Plantation Road Project Phase Two, which is shown on yellow on the map on the left. And this is a one point eight million dollar project. This project will construct sidewalk on the west side of Plantation Road, Waldron Drive to Gander Way. Pedestrian signals and crosswalks will be installed at Gander Way. Intersection improvements will also be completed at Walden Drive. And so preliminary engineering is currently underway with construction anticipated to begin in twenty twenty-one. There are three projects, three sidewalk projects that are on Williamson Road. We'll kind of go, try to go in order that you see, and it's the orange, then the purple, and then kind of the lighter purple. The orange is actually what is being labeled as Phase Two, but it would construct sidewalk from Plantation Road to Peter Creek Road. It's approximately two million dollar project. We struck sidewalk on the northern side of Williamson Road between Plantation Road and Peter Creek Road, and preliminary engineering is currently going underway and construction is anticipated in twenty twenty-two. Next section, which is the purple section, is actually Phase One. It's a one point two million dollar project. And then we construct sidewalk on the western side of Williamson Road between Peter Creek Road and North Roanoke Assisted Living. They would install pedestrian signals and crosswalks at the Peter Creek Road, Williamson Road intersection. The last one is the lighter purple at the end, at the bottom of the map. That is Phase Three, which would take sidewalk from North Roanoke Assisted Living to Clubhouse Drive. About a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And preliminary engineering is scheduled for twenty twenty-three with construction to begin in twenty twenty-four. I'd provide a summary about roughly seven and a half million dollars worth of projects in that area. Next slide. So lastly, we want to talk about our reimagine plans. We've been working on area plans for both Holland's area and Oak Grove. We have both of these plans are trying to develop these as mixed-use multiple areas. Until we've worked through having multiple community engagement sessions, we're almost complete with the Holland Center Plan. It is before the Board of Supervisors at their meeting on July twenty-eighth about whether or not to approve that as part of the county's conference plan. There are recommendations in both plans that deal with land use, community facilities, transportation, gateway, streetscape improvements, as well as further community engagement. So that plan, like I said, the Holland Center Plan, vote for the board on July twenty-eighth. The Oak Grove Center Plan is, we're nearing completion of the document and anticipate holding public hearings this fall. We anticipate having something with our planning commission probably either September, October. This growth is unique in that we are partnered with the city of Roanoke. We have two planning commissions and one board and one city council that have been worked through to get this plan approved. That's all I have to do. So that, I'll turn it back over to you, Jill, and whoever is next.
Thank you, Philip. We are now going to hear from Doug Blunt, Director of Parks and Recreation and Tourism, who's going to give us updates on various facilities and programs as well as Explorer Park. So Doug, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I would like to provide some updates on our park system today, but also talk with you a little bit about some of the positive trends that we're seeing due to COVID nineteen. Certainly, COVID nineteen has had a negative impact on all of our personal and work lives over the last nineteen weeks. As a part of our recreation facilities, we had many of our indoor facilities such as Green Ridge Recreation Center and the Bramallton Community Center closed for ten weeks. We were able, as Virginia entered into Phase Two of its reopening plan, we were able Memorial Day weekend to begin opening Green Ridge and Bramallton and restoring many of the services that we had to have on hiatus due to the closure, due to COVID nineteen. Since then, we've been able to continue to add these services at Green Ridge and Bramallton over the last several weeks. And just this past weekend, we opened the indoor pool at Green Ridge. So we're starting to get back to a new norm with our indoor facilities. But the most interesting trends that we're seeing is in our park system and outdoor recreation. As soon as the pandemic occurred in mid-March and we had the stay-at-home orders, it was encouraged by the governor and many officials to continue to recreate outside. And since the middle of March, we have seen peak usage in our park system, and it has not stopped. We have seen a resurgence with people using trails, our Blue Ways, and just out walking generally in our park system. What we have seen is a direct correlation to people purchasing more higher-end outdoor gear such as kayaks, canoes, mountain bikes, and fitness equipment, which has created supply chain issues for many of our local retailers not being able to meet the demand of the equipment that's needed. And certainly, on any summer weekend day in any of our parks that are associated with one of our Blue Ways, you just see an armada of kayaks, canoes, and inner tubes going up and down the Roanoke River. And I just think that this is just fabulous for our community from an outdoor recreation perspective. One of the other trends that we're seeing that is very positive is that many of our communities were not able to play high school or middle school sports this spring. Youth sports did not occur, and since we've been able to enter into Phase Three, we have seen a significant resurgence in interest for travel team sports. Starting this upcoming weekend on August the first, we start thirteen straight weekends of working with our partners with Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, as well as the city of Salem, hosting youth and adult tournaments. And we will be hosting these facilities, I mean, these tournaments in our local facilities between Roanoke County and the city of Salem. And we will be spread geographically through these different jurisdictions with anywhere from fifty-team tournaments up to one hundred and twenty-team tournaments. And these folks will be coming from the outside of our area, staying in our hotels, staying and eating in our restaurants, as well as purchasing items in our retail establishments. So we're very, very excited that we've been able to reschedule many of the events that didn't happen this spring and been able to find a place for all of them through the fall. And we're hoping to see a very positive economic impact from our sports marketing initiatives. And then Explorer Park is one of our flagship facilities for Roanoke County in terms of outdoor recreation. This park offers hiking trails, mountain bike trails, Roanoke River access, as well as family and camping programs for our residents and tourists. Explorer Park also is a destination facility with the Blue Ridge Parkway Visitor Center and Roanoke County having a franchise of an aerial adventure course called Tree Top Quest. Explorer Park has three private companies that we partner with that provide outdoor recreation services. We are very, very fortunate to have quality local businesses operating in Explorer Park. The first is Blue Mountain Adventures. Blue Mountain operates the primitive camping in Explorer Park, as well as running inner tubing trips on the Roanoke River. Then we have Don's Cabins, which provides cabin, yurt, and RV rentals, and this is operated by Don and Melody Harrison. Then we also have Twin Creeks Brewing Company that provides food and beverage services at Brew Tavern. And when you add all of these different services together, Explorer Park is certainly becoming a overnight destination for visitors regionally, but also along the Blue Ridge Parkway. These businesses, along with the Blue Ridge Parkway Visitor Center and Tree Top, were able to open Memorial Day weekend. These businesses have seen consistent visitation this summer, and their communication to us has been that it's comparable to last summer's visitation numbers prior to COVID nineteen. As I mentioned earlier, the resurgence in users getting outside has been very, very positive for the outdoor recreation industry. As we move forward into the fall, Explorer Park will be constructing new mountain bike skills facilities in the park. We're going to be rehabilitating one mile of existing mountain bike trail, and we'll be building another mile of new mountain bike trail, all to connect together with a new trailhead so that users that are beginning in mountain biking will have an opportunity to be able to come out and have a really positive experience with learning how to ride in the outdoors. And then finally, Explorer Park will open its holiday signature event, Illuminights, starting on November twentieth. This program will run nightly through January third, and we're expecting to have another very successful year with celebrating the holidays out at Explorer Park. And with that, that concludes my update for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Really appreciate your update. I did have a question, but before I ask it, I want to invite all of the participants in today's meeting to feel free to ask their questions, provide comments. Go ahead and enter them into the chat box, and I will get to them shortly. Doug, my question for you is, can you give us an update on what's happening with the Blue Ridge Parkway and the opening of the Parkway?
Yes, we have been in regular contact with Blue Ridge Parkway officials over the last six weeks, right after Memorial Day weekend due to the heavy rainfall that we had through multiple storms. There have been several sections of the Blue Ridge Parkway that either had landslides or they actually had areas where the road actually gave way. And so up until about approximately two weeks ago, the entire Blue Ridge Parkway was closed through the Roanoke Valley from Route twenty-four in Vinton all the way to two twenty. We worked with Blue Ridge Parkway officials to where we could get the Parkway open in Vinton from Route twenty-four to Explorer Park. We were able to have some gates moved to where now you can go from Explorer Park North on the Blue Ridge Parkway. We have been also in communication with them about repairs around one nineteen to where there was a hillslide, as well as there have been some washouts along the road. And the latest information we have is that they will be making these repairs over the next sixty days, and they're hoping by the end of September to have the section of Blue Ridge Parkway open through the Roanoke Valley to two twenty. You won't be able to go past two twenty due to the fact that they've got one substantial repair that's going to have to take place, and that may take as long as twelve months. But we're optimistic by the end of September that we'll be able to have at least the Parkway open for the Roanoke region through our area.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. I do have a question in the chat box from Kenneth Nick, and he's asking the question to everyone. Basically, he says, for small business relief, has anyone considered tax relief for restaurants in regards to meals tax? He suggests that doing this would stimulate the local economy in a domino effect fashion. He states that cumulative meals tax already is a deterrent for patrons and distracts more generous tips from servers and reduces customers, especially families, from eating out. It is higher than the biggest fifty states in America by far, approximately thirteen percent. And he does state that, by the way, he has no personal relationship to the restaurant business. He just thinks that our meals tax structure can unfairly penalize restaurants under normal times. I didn't know if Mr. O'Donnell or Mr. Radford or anyone would like to answer that question. Feel free to chime in.
Well, this is Dan. We did look at a variety of different options, and the board did defer the penalty and interest on personal property tax, but with our own budget situation, we had basically eleven and a half million dollar hit from the proposed budget to the adopted budget from year to year. As I mentioned earlier, a three percent decrease as opposed to what was going to be a three percent increase. We had layoffs, and so we really did not consider a whole lot of those kinds of considerations. Basically, we're in the same financial condition just about everybody else was, I guess. If David wants to comment on that at all.
None, not a whole lot more I can add to that.
We see the pressures from all different sectors, so it's a balancing act for us to try to give to, really to spread it among everybody the best we can. And so we've asked Dan and the administration to, to be forward-thinking and looking in terms of where to share that cost. And a good example is how to spread out the Cares Act funding that we've got. So while we can't help everybody, I would agree with Dan, it's, it's a balancing act.
There was a follow-up question too about the Cares Act funding, Jill.
Yes, what about the 8.2 million of federal funds to help subsidize this relief?
Well, unfortunately, the Cares Act has a restriction that you cannot replace Ross lost revenue forces with the federal funds. And that is a restriction, so the best we could do was the Small Business Grant Program that was allowed. We did look at Cares Act for a variety of types of relief. Unfortunately, there's a lot of strings on the Cares Act restrictions. And one is that you cannot replace lost local revenue. We're prohibited from doing that.
Yeah, the Cares Act funding in general has been a challenge for local governments to navigate. And obviously, the grant program that we unveiled was the best opportunity to provide direct assistance to our business community. So I would like to thank Mr. Nick for his question. And I'm still opening the chat box for anyone else who may have questions of our presenters today. There's a lot going on in the county, a lot of new infrastructure projects. So we're very thankful for the federal funding support that we've received for infrastructure and transportation initiatives. So it's good to see those projects underway and that they're continuing despite our difficult time. If anyone else has anything to add, Mr. Radford, feel free to chime in. But I just wanted to, again, thank everyone for participating in today's town hall. And we look forward to seeing you soon in the community. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, and thank you, Jill, for putting this together today. This is a very informational, I'm so glad we got to hear from Philip, Doug, and of course, Dan. You guys do great work, and Jill, the things that you're doing over in economic development is a tremendous help to the business community. Keep up the good work. And got any follow-up questions, you can email Jill Loop, and we'll be glad to help you out the best we can.
Absolutely.
I'd like, can I make a parting comment if you don't mind? I'd just like to point out to the public that I think even though our buildings were closed, I think you can see the lights were still on. We have great people doing good things in tough times, and I'm very proud to be part of this organization. But it's doing the best they possibly can, and we're going to hang through this with the community. We're going to get through it just fine. Thanks.
We'll get through it together. Thanks again, everyone. I hope you have a great weekend. We'll see you soon.